I would call this meeting the Upstate County Commission to Order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It's a beautiful sunny day out there today, and I suspect it's going to be a hot one later on. Jackie, how are you this morning?
Good.
Please read the minutes of the May 21st meeting. And I guess the May 28th as well.
And the twenty... June...
Yeah, June 2nd.
2nd, okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at Courthouse Annex on Thursday, May 21, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafney called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafney, Commissioner, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant Administrator, and Jacqueline Nick Walker, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation, prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading the minutes, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 14, 2015, of the Upstate County Commission with typographical corrections. J.C. Rafney reviewed correspondence from David Long concerning his request to be considered as a member of the Upstate County Fire Board. Mr. Rafney advised that Mr. Long would have to relinquish his title as honorary firefighter per Fire Board bylaws in order to sit around the board and consequently has withdrawn his request due to the conflict. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the employment of Buchanan Upstate Recreational Park staff members Renee Carr as lifeguard at the rate of $9.30 per hour and lifeguards at the rate of $8.00 per hour as follows. Kalen Bosley, Lindsey Bosley, Brooke Newcomb, Gregory Mack, Haley Williams, Caitlin Mahoney, and Haley Miller. Admissions, Samantha Barlow at $8.00 per hour, and water aerobics instructor Melanie Sandy Grove at the rate of $20.00 per session. Effective date of employment for all is May 21, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the employment of Haley Williams, Rothan, and Corey Johnson as seasonal coaches for the Splashers Swim Team, effective May 21, 2015. Wages will be reimbursed to the county in full by the Splashers Swim Team. Terry Wallace provided a review of the Community Work Experience Program contract between the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources and the Upstate County Commission. Ms. Wallace advised that QUEP is an ongoing program which provides community service opportunities for programs associated with the West Virginia, the HHR. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved and authorized the precedent to sign the contract. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the precedent to sign correspondence requesting a time extension for Governor's Community Participation Program Project numbers 14 LEDA-0249 and 14 LEDA-0247 for bridge repairs at the Upstate County Youth Camp. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the termination of Daniel Boone as Upstate County Animal Control Officer, effective May 22, 2015, as recommended by David Kaufman, Upstate County Sheriff. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of Animal Control Officer. Applications must be received by the report to close the business on Friday, May 29, 2015. J.C. Rafney reviewed information concerning American Legion Memorial Day services at Mount Olive Church at Hemlock on Saturday, May 23, and at Mount Union Cemetery and Heather Cemetery on Monday, May 25. Emil Butcher, Micrologic Incorporated Representative, appeared before the Commission and provided information on the replacement holdup panic system for which Micrologic has submitted a quote in the amount of $9,207.35. At 10:00 a.m. on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to review James W. Currie's scholarship applications. Present were J.C. Rafney, Troy Brady, and Terry Cutright, Terry Wallace, and Tabitha Perry, entered the meeting at 10:10 a.m. The Commission returned to open session at 10:12 a.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. J.C. Rafney reviewed the process for the selection of the winning applicants. Mr. Rafney advised that the applicants had personal information obscured to ensure anonymity of the applicants. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved application number three, Corey McDaniel's, for the female recipient, and application number 16, Tanner Wupner, for the male recipient of the scholarship awards. J.C. Rafney reviewed the following foreign information items. Number one, correspondence from Stephen Canterbury, Administrator Director of the Supreme Court of Appeals, agreeing to Judge Reeger's request to utilize money from the Gordon Lee's Act Fund to purchase carpeting for the magistrate courtroom and the magistrate court offices in Upstate County. Two, Upstate County Tobacco Prevention Coalition handout. Three, correspondence from Maureen Lewis, Administrative Law with the Secretary of State, State of West Virginia, requesting follow-up of the list of all public service districts and their current board members by July 1, 2015. Four, Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project, Delta, May 2015. Five, correspondence from Stephen Ankinson, Lead Land Project Manager, Columbia Gas Transmission, requesting authorization for the upgrade from the... Upon approval, Columbia Gas will increase the maximum allowed operating pressure to 1,000 PSID. Six, dog report, April 2015. Seven, Lewis Upstate Animal Control Adoption Financial Transactions, April 2015. Eight, Upstate County Sheriff's Financial Statement, April 2015. Nine, agendas and our notice of meetings as listed. Ten, meeting minutes as listed. Eleven, meetings as listed. Twelve, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and refunds as listed. The Commission recessed at 11:45 a.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Department Supervisors and the Upstate County Policy Board. With no further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 2:40 p.m. May 28, 2015. The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at Courthouse Annex on Thursday, May 28, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafney called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafney, Commissioner, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, and Tabitha Perry, Assistant Administrator. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. The regular meeting minutes of May 21, 2015, of the Upstate County Commission were unavailable and will be placed on future agenda for approval. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the 2015 emergency operations plan. Mr. Rafney advised that this is the most current plan the county has. Mr. Rafney also advised that the Commission and/or Terry Wallace will follow up with the City of Buchanan to see if they would like to use this plan. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the Micrologic holdup panic system quote in the amount of $10,200 as discussed at the May 21 Commission meeting. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the employment of Buchanan Upstate Recreational Park staff members at the rate of $8.00 per hour as follows. Malin Gay, admissions, Sean Ortman, lifeguard, and T. Abetma, admissions. Effective date of employment for all is May 28, 2015. J.C. Rafney advised that the returning employees receive a pay rate increase of $0.30 per hour, and those employees not making the current minimum wage during the 2014 season have been increased to $20.00 per hour for the 2015 season. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the memorandum of understanding between Mountain Cap and the Upstate County Recreational Park by Upstate County Commission regarding the planning and operation of the summer food program. This plan allows Mountain Cap to provide food to the youth attending the pool at no cost. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the resignation of Sandra Leggett as Deputy Clerk, effective May 18, 2015. Agenda item number six was removed and will be placed on future agenda for approval. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the employment of Heather Parr as full-time fire fee clerk, effective June 8, 2015, at the rate of $15.00 per hour. Terry Wallace provided a review of a proposed budget revision and read the resolution, which is to be sent to the Office of the State Auditorium for approval. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission approved the revision of the General County Fund and authorized the President to sign the request for revision to approved budget. Amy Warner, Field Representative, U.S. House of Representatives, appeared before the Commission and introduced himself. Mr. Warner advised that he is responsible for eight counties and that he will visit each district that needs assistance. He recognizes that constituents are doing great things and applauds them for such. Terry Wallace opened every viewed bids for the telecommunications system. Submitted bids are as follows. Take Communications LLC. A, one-year warranty, digital phones, $33,208.19. B, five-year warranty, digital phones, $38,576.48. C, one-year warranty, IP phones, $40,707.99. And D, five-year warranty, IP phones, $40,721.92. Frontier Communications, A, one-year warranty, digital phones, $40,988.35. B, two-, three-year post-warranty, digital phones, $43,690.35. Frontier Communications, A, one-year warranty, VO IP phones, $51,565.31. And B, two-, three-year warranty, VO IP phones, $54,267.31. Bill Burns, President of Take Communications LLC, and Jeff Kramer, Telephone and Networking Equipment Support for Frontier Communications, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of service and plan options for telecommunication system and answered questions concerning their submitted bids. Mr. Burns recommended digital telephones to the county. The take bids include service plans, setup training, and software support, and the frontier bids include labor equipment. 11:05 a.m. on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A Airport to discuss the three bids for the telecommunication system. Present were J.C. Rafney, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Terry Wallace, and Tabitha Perry. The Commission returned to open session at 11:15 a.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the low bid for the telecommunication system with the five-year warranty, which was submitted by Take Communications, in the amount of $38,576.48. J.C. Rafney reviewed the following foreign information items. Number one, correspondence from Limo's Networks regarding a rate increase of $3.00 per line effective July 1, 2015. Mr. Rafney advised that the county is looking into other providers, since this rate increase will be approximately $3,600 per year. Two, memorandum from April, Dickerson Justice Program Speculus, regarding the fiscal year 2015 court secured grant due scheduled for Thursday, May 28, 2015. Three agendas and our notices of meetings none. Four, meeting minutes as listed. Five, meetings as listed. Six, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. With no further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned the clock toward 10:00 p.m. June 2, 2015. The County Commission of Upstate County, West Virginia, held a special meeting at Courthouse Annex on Tuesday, June 2, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafney called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafney, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, and Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. Donnie Rice, Upstate County Assessor, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of personal real property tax books. Mr. Rice advised that the personal property tax books contained an error concerning the vehicle listed in the incorrect district. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the certification of real and personal property tax books pending correction of the error, i.e., listed vehicle in the correct district. Correction of the error will be made, and the documents shall be signed by each Commissioner prior to the June 7 day when the books will go to the sheriff. Commissioners accompany Buchanan Academy Elementary School first grade students on a tour of the courthouse and annex facilities. With no further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 11:30 a.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read? The minutes, I think, I'm sorry.
We have a question. The paneling buttons on the previous meeting were put to a timeout and had $10,000 sugar bin explanation why we paid the $10,000.
Sure. We can add explanation that we went over the 40 dress alarm buttons that require one panel, so we had to purchase an additional panel, and we can now expand to 80 dress alarms. That would be the reason for the increase. I believe the amount we're going to have initially is around 48.
I think that's what the website...
I'll have to look it up, but it's over 40.
Do you provide that information if you have to? Any additional corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I would request approval of the minutes for the May 21st, May 28th, and June 2nd special meeting. Do I have such a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye. Both same side, motion carries. We have several appointments this morning. One at 10 o'clock for Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, to discuss the maiden linquencies. They'll be meeting at 10:30 scheduled for Chief Deputy Mike Kelly to discuss retirement service credit, and that meeting may be held in executive session because of the subject matter. And then at 2:15, the Commission will be meeting with Attorney General Patrick Morrissey at the Upstate County Development Authority Office as a general meeting, I believe, of the open in the public for purpose of just becoming acquainted. Mr. Morrissey is visiting Buchanan for the purpose of acquainting himself with various public officials and business leaders in the community. So we now will move to the items for discussion. We have correspondence from Patty Adams, Chairman of the Upstate County Republican Executive Committee, requesting use of the Courthouse Plaza, two tables and 12 chairs. On Saturday, June 20, 2015, the Superior will celebrate West Virginia's 152nd birthday. Typically, they provide cake and punch for the public at the Courthouse Plaza, and they are in possession of the required insurance. So, and if weather permit does not permit the outside use, the request will be made for use of the Courthouse lobby in the annex portion of the courthouse. We would need personnel to unlock that. However, we discussed that with Greg Harris, the facilities manager, and he will make someone available if not himself to open the doors in the event there isn't a climate weather. So with that being said, is there approval to allow Patty Adams, the Republican County Executive Committee, to use the Courthouse Plaza on June 20 for a West Virginian celebration?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye. Both same side, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Pauline Maddox, Jr., Public Engineer, Secretary of Transportation Commission, Commissioner of Highways, enclosing the proposed agreement between the Division of Highways and the Upstate County Commission regarding the certain repairs associated with the youth camp Gerder Bridge in Subnyville, Upstate County. That youth camp is also often referred to as the 4H camp. The approval and signature of the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highway Agreement, Youth Camp Gerder Bridge, Upstate County. And this basically is authorization for the Commission President to sign the contract agreeing to the construction of the repairs to the bridge. So is there an approval authorizing that signature of the President of the Commission? Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
There's second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Both same side, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Kristy Riffle and Terry Riffle with the Claus and Whiskers Rescue Foundation, requesting to be included among the group of rescues currently accrued from the Bueller Upstate Animal Control Facility. There's a group of individuals who will remove animals from the Upstate County facility and relocate said animals for adoption to not only West Virginia but outside of West Virginia as well. They have several organizations that engage in that activity, and as a result of that, it minimizes the number of animals that have to be utilized by that facility, which is a good thing. So, in my opinion, it's a good thing.
I have a question.
Yes.
So they basically remove the animals from the family?
They, they...
Sorry. And they have it for sale for what?
No, they've already made arrangements for it to be adopted by various individuals.
Or they can hold them on their own home for amount of time before they are rescued. Rescue agencies use social media in order to find potential homes for the animals that they have rescued from the pound, and that increases the amount of time that the animal would have until it was put down. Because, of course, if they say at the pound, there's risk for the pound to be pulled and then the dog or the cat to be put down as a result. So there are rescue organizations that work with other organizations throughout the state and throughout the country that may be specific to that one breed, and they're more likely to be adopted through the rescue group.
And certainly those animals from our facility reduces our overall costs for maintenance.
Well, that's where it's hard. So are we going to house the animals till they find adoption?
No, no.
No. It's just like if I would go and adopt an animal, at that point, it's my responsibility to house the animal and also to provide food and shelter.
I understand that, but they're not adopting because they're finding a adopted family of the animal.
Technically, when you rescue or you pull, you are adopting. You sign a waiver, and you're responsible for the animal from that point forward.
Okay.
So I have approval to recognize Claus and Whiskers Rescue Foundation.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Doyle Tenny, International Government Electrical Workers, I.D.E.W., Local 596, Attorney Man Electrician, requesting Upstate County consider continuing to pay revending wages to workers on jobs less than $500,000. That's half a million dollars. This request is based on a statute was passed by the legislature during last session in which public jobs that were under $500,000 in the county could be awarded by counties, cities, or other governmental bodies at a rate of less than... I have a term.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage. Because it is public money, I think the theory goes because it was public money, there should be some savings in the use of that. Mr. Tenny has requested that we maintain paying the prevailing wage for jobs that would be under $500,000 as our to do so. To that, I would say, well, the Commission is responsible for ensuring that public funds are expended in a proper manner to ensure that they are afforded appropriate expenditures in light of the fact that it is public money. However, there may be occasionally contracts that come up, but most of these contracts for the county are not large contracts. They are for minor things, and some occasionally also use our own maintenance staff to make repairs to some of the facilities that the county owns, which saves, again, the county money by not having to pay the higher prevailing wage rate. I would think the county, rather than refusing or not complying with the law, or choosing not to comply with the law, would probably on a case-by-case basis determine whether or not the project, depending on the individual project, the significance of the project, the work required, and the degree of expense involved, would make the decision whether or not to pay prevailing wage. But, again, it's very important that we, as the Commission, in light of the tight financial times that we find ourselves in, and not just Upstate County, but also the most county and most governmental bodies throughout the country and throughout the state in particular, find themselves having to do more with less. I presume that that was part of the factoring in to the legislature, proposing and passing that legislation. So having said that, there is... I don't know that we have to make a motion on that. Is there required motion, or just basically, I think...
I think a required motion, I agree with that.
Okay. So based on that request, his request is that we consider continuing to pay prevailing wage to workers on jobs less than half a million dollars. Do I have a motion to approve his request that we not... That we maintain prevailing wage for all county expenditures for public projects? Tenny, is there a motion the last three times? Is there a motion to support that request? No motion forthcoming, that request is dead. Will not be considered. Next, we have correspondence from James T. Farrell, Office of Emergency Management Director, requesting employment of John C. Edwards as part-time Deputy Emergency Manager, effective June 15, 2015, for making $11.00 per hour. This vacancy was required as a result of Mr. Farrell assuming the Directorship of Docus Emergency Management on the retirement of James Farrell, who, for a number of years, had been the Director of Emergency Management, thus creating a vacancy in that position. After advertising a public position and of interviews of impressed applicants, Mr. Farrell has... Excuse me, Mr. Farrell has requested the appointment of Mr. Edwards. Is there a motion to approve that request by Mr. Farrell?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from David H. Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff, requesting the employment of Seth Cutright as a full-time Animal Control Officer, effective June fourteen, twenty fifteen, at the rate of eleven dollars per hour and increasing to twelve dollars per hour after training is completed.
Mr. Finney, Mr. Brown, I wish to finish myself from that vote.
And you wish to excuse yourself for a reason.
He's a faculty member.
Okay, you are required then to leave the vacant room. Mr. Cutright has recused himself from voting on this motion or for this employment because he is a relative of an individual. Is there a motion to approve the employment of Seth Cutright, as full-time Animal Control Officer, as recommended by Sheriff Kaufman?
I have one question. How many people was interviewed for that position?
I am not sure. I'm not involved in the interviews for elected official offices.
J.C., you know how many people?
Right ahead of that.
Shall move.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do you please advise Mr. Cutright if he needs to change it? So hiring was approved. Next, we have correspondence from Angela B. Dress, Dryce Dress, U.S. Sales and Marketing Leader, regarding the equipment lease agreement between the Upshur County Commission and Three M Monitoring Successor of Elmo hyphen Tech Incorporated, and requesting permission to use in this closed office offender data for law enforcement purposes. This is a contract that we have with Three M for purpose of monitoring individuals through our Day Report Center and Community Corrections Program. In order for them to report information which the monitor has provided, for example, if one of our individuals is under the administration of the Community Corrections, the monitor reflects that that individual was in close proximity to an area where possibly a crime occurred. In order for Three M to provide that information to the Community Corrections or to law enforcement, there has to be an understanding or permission on part of the individuals or their organization entering into the contract that they have permission to provide that information to law enforcement. The County Commission is the contractual party with Three M that is leasing that equipment. And therefore, it is required that the Upshur County Commission authorize Three M to provide that information to the Community Corrections or to law enforcement directly, depending on the circumstances. Otherwise, what purpose would we need the monitoring for? If it could not be used to ensure that those that maintain the ankle bracelets or other devices are in compliance with the rules that they've been released on. So is there a motion to authorize Three M to provide monitoring information to the Community Corrections or other law enforcement organizations as a result of their monitoring process?
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have three information items. Correspondence from Ron Hooton, Director, Seven Manager of the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways, addressed to Derek Perry, Assistant County Administrator, responding to Commission Officers' letter of concern on road conditions around twenty in Upshur County. That's located on page twenty-six. And basically, Mr. Hooton advised that the DOH will make arrangements, if they have not done so, to clear a ditch as it appears to be full. That was in response to a letter we received from Mrs. Castro, I believe, Mabel Castro, regarding concerns that she expressed on that particular section of Route twenty. However, he advised that DOH will not remove any material from the cut slope to allow more sight distance coming out of the driveway. This is the property owner's responsibility. They will need to schedule a contract or some other means to have this done while having approved permit from DOH for both to work on the DOH right of way. So they have cleared the ditch in front of the residence that aligns the highway, but other work in that, if necessary, has to be at the owner's expense. We thank the Division of Highways and Mr. Hooton for his attention to this matter in response to our written request. Thank you, Tabitha, for following me on that. Continuing, we have a correspondence from Terry Gould, Manager of Tennerton Public Service District, regarding plans for the Sunny Buck Gardens complex. That complex is located across from Kroger's on Route twenty and appears to be progressing nicely and nearing completion. The letter from the Tennerton Public Services District advises that they are providing the sanitary sewer for the complex and that this complex plan includes a collection system, pump station, a forced main to the discharge point. And that the approval for this at Sunny Buck Gardens was approved at the meeting on May thirteenth of the Tennerton Public Service District. The Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, paraphrasing article, has provided the county with a pamphlet with information concerning, information regarding smoking and concerns, health concerns, public health concerns regarding smoking, which will be included in our packet for any interested party. We have the Columbia Pipeline Group, an invitation and formal open house meeting, which will occur next Wednesday at Elkhills at the Isaac Jackson Hotel, I believe, at seven o'clock in the evening for informational purposes. A portion of that pipeline, I think it's WTX Pipeline, will transit Upshur County. So interested parties, that could be property owners or public officials or the general citizens, may request or may decide to attend that meeting for whatever purpose.
It will be Wednesday, June seventeen, from six to eight.
Oh, six, that was right. Six, that was, thank you. I've only retained so much up here. The gray cells are starting to diminish. Next, we have, uh, number four. Oh, he said number four.
You didn't get number four. You just kept the Columbia Pipeline, I believe, official.
Oh, number five is Columbia Pipeline.
You didn't do number four.
Oh, did not, William. Oh, I'm sorry. Next, number four, we have Williams reporting safety information to public officials for twenty fifteen, which is, form is provided to officials submitting forth information, safety information that Williams provides relative to pipeline installation and whatnot. Moving to number six, correspondence from Daniel A. Weekly, Vice President, Corporate Affairs, Dominion Resources, enclosing an Atlantic Coast Pipeline Act book, which also is available to the public, either through the company or if they wish to come to the County Commission, we can make a copy for them. We have building permits for May of this year. Going down through that, that shows we have a total so far of almost a million and a half in building permit construction during May, which is always a good sign to see projects commencing in Upshur County. We have dog and cat report for May fifteen. We have a nine-one-one communication center report for May fifteen, which includes call summary, departmental summary, and the year-to-date record report. We have Communication Family Resource Network Director's report for May twenty fifteen. We have the Health Department Newsletter, published in June, four June of the twenty fifteen. We have Chamber of Commerce Newsletter for June twenty fifteen. We have agendas and notices of meetings. We have minutes of meetings. We have meetings listed. And we have vacancies on the boards. And we have appointments needed for those boards. The next regular meeting, the Upshur County Commission, will be on June eighteen, twenty fifteen, at nine o'clock. And now we again have a ten o'clock meeting, or appointment, I should say, scheduled with Sheila Adams. So pending her arrival and presentation, I would recommend we work on our bills. We have Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, Upshur County Sheriff's Department, to report on May delinquencies, I believe.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning, Sheila.
This is the annual presentation of our May delinquent list. Those bills came out July of two thousand and fourteen. And the ladies downstairs have been collecting since that time. Both houses were delinquent as of April the first and then subject to publication. And we've done those publications and they are posted here at the courthouse. We had three hundred and sixty-five thousand, I'm going to just read rough numbers, okay? Three hundred and sixty-five thousand for personal property delinquencies, four hundred and three thousand for real estate. And we had some supplemental tickets, and those were thirty-two hundred. So our total delinquencies were seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. We have properties that were exonerated, personal and real, those totaled twenty-three thousand. We are currently at ninety-seven percent of the taxes collected. I have provided each one of you with a listing of the delinquents list, if you could sign each one of those. I also have provided one list, which Commissioner Brady has, that has the, it's an unpaid ticket listing. I did highlight anything that was a ticket that was over a thousand dollars, just so you all can see who some of our bigger customers are that have delinquencies. And we have about three companies that have some considerably high tickets in there. And right now, for our unpaid taxes, we have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, and that's going to dwindle down. In September, the real estate will be advertised again. And then in November, if it's still not paid, there'll be a tax being sold against the real estate. Real estate really comes in at about a hundred percent. The personal property taxes usually just keep trickling in as people leave, lots of seasons and things like that.
Well, it seems that ninety-seven percent is very close to normal. I think normally it's ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent.
We usually finish out our year in that ninety-seven, ninety-eight range, yes.
Which, in today's economic environment, is, that's very good, I think.
We have taxpayers who pay pretty promptly and do a good job with that. And the ladies work very diligently trying to locate those folks and trying to help them with the assistance that they need. Our beginning-of-the-year accounts receivable this year versus last year, it's like a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars higher. And our delinquencies are only twenty-seven thousand dollars higher, so.
We thank you for your efforts and we thank you for your report. And thank the sheriff for lending you, loaning you to us for this briefing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sheila. You have a good day.
You too.
So I guess there's any questions, anyone has?
I don't have any. Just keep doing the outstanding work.
Thank you.